Ballot order? It's cool. Can we please stand for the flag salute and Chief Cahill will you please start us?
Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. It is the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
Lisa, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Cribble?
Here.
Commissioner Landgraf, let the record reflect Commissioner Landgraf's absent. Mayor Holtzman?
Here. Provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act have been met. Notice of this meeting, Resolution 2019 - 16, has been published in the Press of Atlantic City and sent to the Mainland Journal and the Current and is given to those having requested and paying for the same and posted on the bulletin board in the City Hall on January 11, 2019. Tonight, we don't have any presentations. We do have a Boy Scout here, am I correct? Two Boy Scouts that have to, they're going for, what badge is it? Citizenship and Community Badge. So they came tonight to see what goes on in a commission meeting and then I'll chat with you guys afterwards, okay? So no presentations, but they're here, so I just wanted to acknowledge their presence. We don't have any department head reports. I think Chief Cahill will discuss when we get to the firehouse, am I correct? And as well as Ed or engineer, okay? We are not discussing capital this evening. So I will go through the items that we will vote on. This is our workshop for the people in the audience and then after the workshop, we go into the meeting where we make official votes. Okay, so the following items are scheduled for action at the 124, 2019 regular portion of the meeting. We have minutes of November 8th, regular meeting, November 29th, regular, December 13th, regular, December 13th, executive, and December 27th, regular.
Excuse me, Mayor. November 29th, we may need to pull because Commissioner Landgraf is not here and he were not at that meeting.
I thought I missed one.
Yeah, so we'll pull that and we'll put it on to the February meeting.
Gotcha, so we're gonna pull that one.
You're pulling?
That's gonna be the pull. Yes. Because Commissioner Landgraf's not here.
So you can't really, I'm still with that.
Next, we will introduce ordinance 2019 - 003, and that is the bond ordinance providing for the improvements to the fire station number two by the city of Ventnor County, Atlantic State, New Jersey appropriating 3.5 million, therefore en authorizing the issuance of 3, 3, 3, 3, 3, 3, 3 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. Do we have any discussion on that, Commissioner Cribble?
No.
No? Do we want Chief Cahill to speak now in the workshop portion? No? I don't have any questions.
Do you want to say where that we are, what stage we're at in the bidding?
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to have like a quick, that's the workshop is a discussion.
Sure.
Yeah, it's a large project.
Yeah, it's a good size enough, but the money that's being bonded initially was in 41 to 17, till 2017, was for repairs to Station 2. That was 1.5 million dollars, which there were no repairs, the building was beyond repair. So the money that was put aside for that wasn't going to be enough to build a new station. So that's why we're reissuing this ordinance to reflect the appropriate amount of money that the structure's gonna cost with some, I guess, when you say some wiggle room for any changes or the like. The building is through the bid process. We have received, I believe, 11, is it 11 for sure?
Yeah.
Bids on the structure and they're in the midst of reviewing the different bids and making sure everybody's paperwork was appropriate, meeting the federal, state, and local guidelines. And then we're going to pick a contractor and get the process started.
Okay, did you want to mention anything?
Mayor, no, I think the chief has covered it.
All right, okay. Chief, just for the public's knowledge and since we're recorded and I do know a lot of people have been watching, do you want to just give us a real quick background of when that firehouse, it's Firehouse 2, which is the one in the Ventnor Heights, when it was built and how it was supposed to be a temporary?
Station 2 was built in 1972 to replace a building that the department had outgrown that used to be at the ball field over at the foot of the water tower. The building was originally staffed with one person and the engine of that era, which is probably 20% smaller than the engines are today, or the fire apparatuses today. The fire apparatus that are in there now, because the department has grown, the city has grown, and the risk has grown, really are beyond the size of the building we're in. The building has also seen better days. Today, for example, with the rains we had, water pours through the walls when it rains. And I mean, not drip, drip, but the entire apparatus room floor is soaking wet. The windows leak air and whatever. And the building is, it was probably a 10 to 15 year building when it was built 50 years ago. And you can push on walls and the rot is immediately evident because whole walls can move. It needs to be taken down and replaced. It was getting close to the point where, as I discussed it with the commissioner when this first process of determining we needed a new building, it was getting to the point where the members of Local 38, the firefighter's unit, were about to start filing grievances about the living conditions over there. And when you think about it, they do live there, 24 hours in that building, which the main living area where two members are is about 250 square feet with the sink that if you have a meal, one dish fills it. It's like a bar sink 12 by 12. It's, it's not a firehouse. It was a temporary structure that its time has come. It needs to go. I spent six years there and hated every day of it, honestly. Anybody have any questions? Anybody wants to see it? Give me a call, I'll take you over and show it to you.
So this building is a building, we went through the design process, Chief and I, and it's designed in a way that is, I wouldn't call it with, it's a utilitarian building, but we'll be proud of it from an aesthetic standpoint as well. It's kind of modeled after the other designed buildings in the city. And it's also meant to be a building that can service generations into the future.
Oh, that is an 80 to 100 year building without major anything being done on it?
Significant to say that it's also not sticks and construction. It's going to be precast concrete panels that are going to withstand the 500 year FEMA standard, which we're required to go to. So we've got a brisk fire department in terms of calls in that area and we need that presence in the area. And we also are benefiting from USDA funding that's going to help make this, make this the financing. Better thing for the bonding.
Yeah, the building will be a much safer place for the firefighters assigned there and God forbid it is a building of last resort if we needed to retreat to in a major storm. Because the fire department rode out the storm, Hurricane Sandy, in quarters working. There was 18 people in that building over there for the whole storm. And I was very hesitant to think that building would hold up if we had high winds. We had plans to maneuver out of that building if needed, but that building did stay dry. So it was the only time we were dry for the entire week.
The next item, we'll have a public hearing and the adoption of ordinance 2019 - 001. That's the ordinance of the city of Ventnor County of Atlantic State, New Jersey, creating section 90 of the code of the city of Ventnor entitled Rehabilitation of Abandoned Properties. And we all, we discussed this last one.
We discussed it. It's just another vehicle for the city of Ventnor to improve neighborhoods in conjunction with the ACIA.
Right. We're good?
Absolutely.
The next, we will have a public hearing and the adoption of ordinance 2019 - 002, an ordinance of the city of Ventnor County of Atlantic State, New Jersey, amending the Ventnor Northeast redevelopment plan. And that is the North Beach area, correct, Tim?
Yeah, that is the North Beach area. This, if you recall, this is something, and Lance will be able to fill us in in more detail, but this is something that has been going, that has been with the planning board. They've reviewed it. Jim Rattell, our planner, came up with a plan. The board adopted a plan and this is the final step, so to speak, in enacting that plan, which would amend the North Beach development.
We're finally there.
Yes, we're finally, it has been amended in the past. This is just the latest version of amendment, so.
All right, great. We're good?
Yeah.
I think we falled that one to death, don't we? Okay, the next, we will have resolutions that we will vote on by consent. And the first one is 2019 - 046. That's authorizing an emergency repair on Oakland Avenue. How much was that at?
Not to exceed 25 hundred dollars.
Oh, I like that number. Thank you.
So do I.
The next is, or, do you have anything for that, Kim? We're good? Next, 2019 - 047. That's adopting a wellness policy in the city of Ventnor. Maria, this is?
This is recommended by our insurance.
Okay.
It's your typical wellness policy.
Well, we do, but we do that. I mean, Sarah does the wellness.
Yeah.
She stays on top of that.
So this is one of the requirements.
Okay. Well, we, yeah, so it's just formalizing what we've been doing. Okay. The next is Resolution 2019 - 048, and that's designating the Atlantic County Improvement Authority as a rehabilitation entity authorized to act in conjunction with the city of Ventnor under the Abandoned Properties Rehabilitation Act. And that's what you already said.
Yeah, that's adopted in conjunction with ordinance one that we just described. That resolution basically names the ACIA as the person that will come in once we do some initial things and basically do the work.
Okay. We'll go with that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The next is Resolution 2019 - 049, and that's amending Resolution 041 of 2019, appointing the Ventnor City Municipal Alliance Committee members. Is that because we added someone already?
Right.
Lisa?
Yes.
Pastor Smith?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Yes, he was excited to be a part of it. That's good. The next is, where am I? Okay, Resolution 2019 - 50, amending Resolution 016 of 2019, setting the 2019 city commissioner meeting schedule. Is that, we added the February 14th on the original? Is that the only add-on?
14th and then, I had it Tuesday, but it's, I changed it to the 27th, which is going to be a Thursday.
Okay.
That's until June.
In June. In June, okay. So there's just, there's just two changes from the original ordinance?
Yes.
And then the commission was going to treat us to dinner that night. Valentine's Day.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay, the next one, I'm very excited about this one. 2019 - 051, and tonight, we will not only appoint, but we will swear in our new certified financial officer, Albert Stanley, and he's here tonight. So when we get to our meeting part, we will appoint you and swear you in. The next, 2019 - 052, authorizing the change order number two and final payment for 2013 to 2015 community development block ran drainage improvements of Newark and Winchester Avenues intersection. Drainage improvements Wyoming and Winchester Avenues intersection Winchester's Avenues intersection Winchester Avenue drainage improvements from Washington Avenue to Lafayette Avenue. Wow. So does that mean that the residents there will be happy?
We're working on that. This is a project that I think is about two years in the making to close out. So it's work that has been completed. There's punch list items that were remaining. Roger McLaren is the one who has closed this out. We have awarded, commissioners have awarded this project, I think in our last commission meeting, for Winchester Avenue drainage improvement. That will be the one that makes.
Everybody happy. Gotcha, okay. We like to make people happy.
Well, this is also a decrease, correct?
The change order, yes. We like decreases.
That's a good point.
Yes. The next is 2019 - 053, and that's authorizing closing out escrow accounts. We have nothing on that, right? It's for people that?
It was a planning board?
Typical.
It's been cleared and they're done, so this was the last one, I'm just going to bring that.
The next is 2019 - 054, identifying a pool of engineers the city could contract with on a needed basis for the city of Ventnor and Margate Capital Projects. Anything to discuss on that? We did this in conjunction with Margate, am I right?
Yep, this is the second year.
Second year.
There are six firms on here. And I think Ed would tell you, each firm probably has strengths in different areas to cover.
That is correct. Very good cross-section of municipal engineering firms that allow us to go out for proposals and they all, they all are very solid municipal engineers. Some have strengths in certain areas than others, but as a cross-section, it's a very good.
Great.
And the bids seem to be coming back quickly and that monitor seems to be a device to get things done.
Yes.
We're good?
Yeah.
The next is Resolution 2019 - 055, and that's amending Resolution 387 of 2018, awarding Polistina Associates for Design and Construction Management Services for the assessable ramp installation in Ventnor Heights. What is that all about?
Commissioners awarded a.
Backside.
Commissioners awarded an engineering contract for replacement of gutter and accessible ramps in Ventnor Heights in anticipation of the gas company repaying those streets between Wellington and Burke, between Harvard and Dorset Avenue. Gas company did all their service renewals in there and by ordinance required to resurface the streets. There were several locations on those, in most streets where the gutter has settled and water pools and rather than have the gas company repay to a settled gutter, we, commissioners awarded a contract to go out for engineering, to replace the gutters that have settled and at the same time to install accessible corner rims. So it's the sidewalks that ramp down to the intersection. We awarded that contract. Polistina went out and did surveying and they identified seven additional locations as kind of a good gesture brought back to my attention. I'm making the recommendation that we extend their contract to include this.
Thank you.
Makes sense?
Okay. The next is 2019 - 056, awarding Maser consulting engineers for the Marshall and Oxford Avenue Drainage Project. Yeah, Dad?
This is a project that we have identified. There's been a, I think, apparently longstanding drainage problem at the intersection of Marshall and Oxford that's in front of the Waterview apartment complex. This is the award of engineering to install additional pipe to redirect some of that drainage and hopefully reconstruct that intersection to divert the standing water and improve the drainage.
More happy people, thank you.
We're driving.
Yeah, there you go. The next is 2000, anything on that, Commissioner Cribble?
No.
Okay. The next is 2019 - 057. This is authorizing the payout of funds to Toro, how do you say, Aberdeen? It's just whatever she had.
Crude sick days.
Her sick time, that's it? Nothing?
Unused time?
Any unused time that she had earned. No big buy.
Can I comment on that? And it has nothing to do with Toro, who I love, but you guys should give yourself a pat on the back based upon the ordinances that you introduced, which limits these types of payouts. So this is significantly less than some of the payouts we see, have seen in the future. So when you sat up there and said, "This is laying the groundwork for the future financial success of the city of Ventnor," now it's starting to come home to bruce. So good job.
Thank you. The next is 2019 - 058, awarding Duran Engineering for the CAFRA permit modification to Ventnor Fishing Pier.
Yeah, so briefly, this is an example of that pool of engineers working. I actually handed it over to Ed to do the writing of the RFP. So the design of the pier is done and this is just to amend the CAFRA engineering or permit so that we can, we can then put out the new pier bathrooms and snack bar out to bid to be, to be built, knowing that that application is modified to allow. There's some minor changes in the size of the permit that existed to the one that we're proposing, but so fingers crossed it goes through quickly so we can get to work on the building.
So it'll be done by summer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything to add?
No, that was a question. It's an application in the CAFRA.
Right.
Thank you. Next is 2019 - 059, awarding DeBlessio and Associates for Design and Construction Services for the Kingsley Drive Sanitary Sewer Project. Ed, this is one of the big, this is the big one that we?
This is a project that came up kind of last minute. We, commissioners have awarded a contract to repay Kingsley Drive after that, excuse me, awarded a contract for engineering to design for the paving, repaying of Kingsley Drive. It was after that that we realized the sanitary sewer main on Kingsley Drive has some significant issues and we need to replace that. So we did a quick RFPs. The DeBlessio Associates from the 2019 engineering pool were low bidders to design and remove and replacement of the sanitary services.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, that was not a longstanding issue. That came up last year, I remember. Thank you. Next is 2019 - 60, accepting the resignation of Josh Corona, and that is a public works employee that was out on leave.
While he pursued a different career path.
Yes, yes. Graduated from the academy, right? He works for the shower supply now. Is it the shower, right?
It is the shower, yes.
The next is 2019 - 061, authorizing the hiring of employees for the city of Ventnor. This is our two firemen, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And they will be coming onboard when, Chief Cahill?
They're going to be sworn in on February 4th.
Off the civil service list?
They were hired off the civil service list as we've been hiring off the civil service list from the day we got in office. Yes, but yes, they are, you go down the whole process.
They're in rank order from the state list after the interview process, was followed through, they're good guys. And I think they'll do very well.
They both grew up in Ventnor, didn't they?
They are both lifelong Ventnor residents.
Great, good. Sounds good.
And one is an EMT now, the other is already enrolled in the EMTs.
Yep, well, one is an EMT, will start in EMT in the details of EMT work in the city after he gets his orientation. The other's in school now, will graduate, and we're going to be sending him to the fire academy in tandem. One starts on the 7th and the next one will go at the next opening of the next class.
Great.
Excuse me, Mayor, Commissioner, before you move on from the consent agenda, I have two to add for your consideration. One is an amendment to public workers' employees teams contract, Local 929. This is setting some parameters, I think you have that in front of you, in regards to their sick time and accountability for sick time, whereas they're required to bring in a sick note after being out for a number of days or a number of days in a row. It defines immediate family member and it sets forth requirements in regards to that.
And the union signed off on that?
The union signed off on it, yep. So just, you need to consider it and vote on it.
So that's Resolution 2019 - 061 by consent, correct?
062.
Well, I have two.
061 is already?
62, correct. And then we have another one.
Then I have one more for you that you probably want to discuss. Is this on the discussion list? Lisa, okay. So this would be a resolution of the city to waive fees for special events that are city sponsored events. Currently, as you know, we have fees for events, application fees and various types of fees for security and fees depending on the size of the event. So you have a list in front of you of the recommendation of the fees that should be waived and.
But this is what that fee would be if you did not waive it? Okay, but this, when you say a city event, this is purely the city? This is not the city in conjunction with, say, the Ventnor Business Association?
This is us.
No. No, this is, this is the list.
No, but I know, but I wanted to know. Okay.
I can.
I got you. I see it here.
This is the, these are organizations that are closely tied to the city that we support with either funds, like the Ventnor Business Association, or our fire department, like the Kenny Whalen Run and various barbecues for the schools, lifeguard races, like the beach patrol, the beautification committee, which does chef's night out in the garden tour, which donates greatly heavily to the, to the city in the form of trash cans and other, and banners, things of that sort. The Ventnor City Holiday Parade, so the holiday parade down Ventnor Avenue, and this year also something new is a trunk or tree. So the, for Halloween, the farmer's market as well, which is my personal, one of my personal favorites, something that I think brings just a sense of community to the city. So these are, these are folks that we've worked with over the years and in the case of the VDA, we also have an agreement with to help fund. So it makes, I think it makes good sense for quality of life in the city for us to make it easier for these organizations to take place. That being said, we have an ordinance in place where anybody that wants to have their fees waived, they have to come to this forum and ask for it personally. And so this is kind of, this kind of memorializes a list of things that we are going to waive and anything else has to be on a.
Okay. My, my only concern, which isn't really a concern, but the paperwork will still be filed, so everything, we know everything is in place. I mean, you know, the paperwork.
Special Events Committee, that's not changed.
Exactly. You know, the coordination.
They'll have to fill out an application and go through the normal process.
It has to be vetted through the police, fire, fireworks, when anything of that sort happens.
Still need to complete the insurance requirement.
Right, that's a real important piece. I mean, they still have to have their own insurance requirements that we do not pay for to, you know, sort of co, you know, to keep us all protected. But we're talking, so we're talking about?
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
These are all events that we're all very familiar with and have all probably attended.
And some of those actually give back to the city financially, like the farmer's market. They take their surplus and turn it back over to the city. And Shelley in the beautification committee is buying trash cans for the city and is looking at beautifying Ski Beach this year, so.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I was just, wanted to clarify that, as long as the paperwork and everything still gets vetted because?
Yeah, we're not taking any shortcuts in that matter. This is just simply.
The fees get waived.
Waiving the fees for, basically, most of these are all nonprofits.
Right, right.
And I believe they all are.
Yes. Okay.
Connected to the city.
But connected to the.
Yeah, yes.
Someone might even have mailboxes here.
Yeah, I actually thought they were. That's fine. Okay, I'm good with that.
It's a good, it's a good thing.
The next, we will have approval of our bills and payroll.
63.
Is that right? That's 2019 - 063, correct? Okay. Then we'll have approval of our bills and payroll discussion items. We will do them now, correct? Okay. We have, first item is 112 South Swafmore Avenue, street opening hardship. Oh, Gavin, I'm sorry, Ed.
Thank you, Mary. We received a letter from the owners of 112 South Swafmore. That was a subject currently of a subdivision in 2017. One lot divided into two. The owners of the newly created lot, which is oceanfront, have received the building permit, are under roof, and then made application for gas and found out that they need sewer and water, but the street has a more toward, our recommendation is obviously. Our recommendation is obviously to, to permit it and permit it with extraordinary restoration of the street.
With the square footage that Lance explained.
The, the Whitehall ordinance reads, I believe, they would appear before a subsequent meeting, before commissioners. They have to send a notice to the neighbors of that hearing before the commissioners, but I think we do this first in order to make sure we're okay.
You okay with that?
Yeah, so it's going to be curb to curb and a number of yards, is that the restoration to the street? Or is it, it's not just a patch?
Certainly, it's a condition, it's a condition of the commissioners.
Okay.
We would look to have one patch that encompasses all the openings, so there would be a gas, a water, and a sewer. So it would be one patch that, that encompasses all of them and likely would be curb to curb, yes.
Because didn't we cha, don't we have that in the ordinance now? Wasn't that something Lance, I remember-
Yes.
Curb to curb?
Yes, so what, what is in the ordinance is, is the description of the entire process that we first have this discussion, then we notify the applicant so that they can send out a notice to, to the neighbors, provide a date of the, the next commission meeting, then they come and residents, the neighbors that have any concerns have an opportunity to come here and be heard by the commissioners.
And then if you're, if not, then if we can do a resolution, so what I'll do is I can reach out to them, I'll put it on for the February twenty-eighth meeting, public hearing, and then a resolution ready, if you wish, to, to pass that night, or if you're fine.
Okay.
You know what, Lisa, can I amend that a little bit?
Of course.
Unless Ed tells me there's a timing issue, I would prefer to have the hearing, have the vote of the commissioners, but at the hearing have Ed present any conditions that he thinks he wants to include in the resolution and then have the resolution prepared for the next meeting.
Okay.
Incorporating those conditions.
Is that, will Mr.- Yeah, is the gentleman here who's requesting it?
If you want to come up and just state your name, Anthony Marata, sixteen Southwest St. Good Avenue, Ventnor City. I'm the agent for the owners of the property, they live in Florida in the wintertime. We put this together, we've been working together with the administration, the consi, I appreciate that position on that. The resolution design, the way they were talking about, he's on the roof sheet rock, I mean, he's going to be looking at getting into his property by May.
Right. So- So this won't delay, in other words, once they vote, then he can proceed, you know, still be proceeding at his own risk, but the chances of the commission somehow changing their minds two weeks later are slim and none.
I, I don't really see an issue on that end of it. My concern is going to be dealing with the beaut, dealing with, with the local municipality here and the public works for the water and sewer is a, is a relatively reasonable and respectful process. Dealing with South Jersey Gas is a challenge. It's been hard enough getting to a particular point, so I'm just anticipating what's going to wind up happening in that end of it. And if we had the resolution, it would make it a much easier process with South Jersey Gas and waiting, if it's two weeks later, so if it's really a concern for the, for the, for the administration, we'll work with it, it's been, been quite some time since we're trying to get through this. If it's really a concern for you, it's okay. If it's something that you're comfortable with, we would ask you to consider the conflict, that's all.
All right, we can discuss that.
I'll, I'll work, I'll work with, with, with the engineer and everybody for getting the two hundred foot lease, and Lisa, for doing what we have to do to get the list out. I believe we already have the list, if I'm not mistaken, I think I took care of that already with that. So we're pretty ready to get that going, so you guys give me some instructions over the next couple of days and we'll make it happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, we go with that?
Yes.
The ne, the next says waiver of fees, is that, did we handle that already?
Yeah.
That, that stopped, right? Okay. So that's it for the discussion items, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so. Next is our public portion, so if anyone from the public would like to speak on any of the items that we've discussed so far, do I have a motion to open public portion?
Motion to open public portion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public like to speak? You come up to the mic, it's on anything we've already discussed, only what we discussed.
Do I need to ask for a waiver for a Farmers Market?
Oh, for the Farmers Market?
Nope. Nope.
No, you forgot, you're good.
You're good.
No, thank you for coming in.
We're going to vote on it next, but you're-
Okay, very good.
Good, we're ready. Anyone from the public, you come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you can speak on anything that we discussed thus far. No? I see none. Do I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion to close.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the, do I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting?
Motion to close workshop portion?
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I will now call to order the regular portion of the meeting and we will go forward. I need a mo, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for November eighth, regular meeting, December thirteenth, regular meeting, December thirteenth, executive meeting, and December twenty-seventh, regular meeting?
Motion to approve minutes as described?
I'll second it. Lisa, roll call.
Mr. Crevel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman? Yes.
Okay. I am going to jump out of order. I am going to ask for one of the consent items to be pulled out and vote on it now because then I'm going to swear out in, okay? So it is, I just have to find it. So do I have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero five one, appointing Albert Stanley as our chief financial officer?
Motion to, uh, uh, motion to approve as described.
Thank you. I'll second it. Lisa, roll call, please.
Mr. Crevel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Okay, Al, I will come down there and we will swear you in. She wants to get further fly. Come on, let's go over here. Well, let's go over here, it's easier for the camera. I think, yes.
There you go.
Okay, are we ready?
Excuse me.
This all first. Are we ready? Like, so, we're there. Be after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Albert Stanley.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
The State of New Jersey-
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance-
And allegiance.
To the Saint-
To the Saint.
And to the government's established-
And to the elements established.
In the United States-
In the United States.
In the state, in the state, I'm sorry, in the state.
In the state.
Under the authority of the people-
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly perform-
And justly perform.
All the duties of-
All the duties of.
The office of-
The office of.
Chief Financial Officer-
Chief Financial Officer.
Effective January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen-
Effective January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
According to the best of my skill and ability-
According to my best skill and ability.
So I'll be gone.
So I'll be gone.
You can sit, you can sit here. Okay, there you go, Al, sit there, you know, we'll sign these examples.
Swearing, that's heard of it. Oh, you're on the side of the almanac.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. Tim, this is Al, Al. Okay, so now let me get back on track. Okay, next, we are introducing the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero zero three and that is our bond ordinance for the fire station. Do I have a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Motion to introduce the ordinance?
Do I have a second, I mean, I'll second it. Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next is a public hearing on ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero two one and that is the ordinance of the city of Ventnor creating, State of New Jersey creating section ninety code, ninety of the code of the city of Ventnor entitled Re-Location of Abandoned Properties. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone from the public like to speak on this topic? I see none. Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the ordinance adoption, two thousand nineteen dash, where am I? Oh, yeah, I'm right, I thought I was repeating it. Two thousand nineteen dash zero one, do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt ordinance two thousand nineteen zero zero one.
I'll second it. Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next, we have a public hearing on ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero zero two and that is the ordinance of the city of Ventnor, County of Atlantic State, New Jersey, amending the Ventnor Northeast redevelopment plan. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing as described?
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Anyone from the public like to speak on this ordinance? I see none. Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the ordinance introduction of two thousand nineteen dash zero two. Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt ordinance two thousand nineteen zero zero two.
I'll second it. Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do I have a motion to open to the public, and this is for the resolutions that we will be voting on by consent only? Do I have a resolution to open to the public?
Motion to open pu, public comment.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public like to speak on any of the resolutions that we will be voting on by consent? I see none. Do I have a motion to close the public comment section?
Motion to close.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have resolutions to adopt by consent, two thousand nineteen dash zero six three and we are going to admit zero five one because we did that separately and that was the appointment of our new CFO. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolutions by consent?
Motion to adopt resolutions by consent as described.
I'll second it. Lisa, roll call, please.
Mr. Crevel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next, we have the approve our bills and payroll and Lisa, will you give us those figures, please?
Sure, we have payroll from twelve thirty two thousand eighteen to one twelve two thousand nineteen in the amount of five hundred and twelve thousand seventy-nine dollars and ninety-six cents, and we have bills in the amount of one million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and five cents.
Do I have a motion to approve bills and payrolls?
Motion to approve bills and payrolls.
I'll second it. Lisa, roll call, please.
Mr. Crevel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next, we have announcements, safety reports. Is this a safety report?
Yep.
Commissioner Crevel? Okay. So Commissioner Crevel will give us a quick update on the safety report.
It is somewhat quick. Uh, the Safety Committee met on Wednesday, January sixteenth. There were some changes to the nine, two thousand nineteen Safety Incentive Program discussed. In addition to complying with all the normal items documented, toolbox topics, site inspections and job site observations with stated frequencies will allow increased monetarily, will allow an increase monetarily to two thousand seven hundred and fifty if complied. The ACMJIF Annual Safety Breakfast is being held March seventh, open to all departments, employees and elected officials, in addition to regular members of the meeting, of the Safety Committee. They did review two incidents, both workman's comp related that occurred in December. On a timely basis, the Safety Bulletin on Snow Removal and Urgencies was distributed in the meeting's agenda, monthly wellness newsletter was also included for distribution to the start of New Year's. And Ventnor's hosting classes on bloodborne pathogens and hearing conservation training as rego, as required annually. Those wishing to attend the February thirteenth meeting, it will be held at ten AM as opposed to the normal nine AM slot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you, do we, do you have any other comments or reports, Commissioner Crevel?
I think we covered them.
We're good? Okay. All right, now we will open it up to the public if they, if you have any questions. Jane, if the boys want to ask, they can ask anything now, if they want to ask that or do they want a private setting? They want private? They want, they want private? Okay. All righty. So if I, I'd like to open up to the public, do I have a motion to open to the public for anything that the public would like to speak on?
Motion to open for public comment?
I'll second it. All fa, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public like to speak on anything? I see none. Do I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion to close.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we do have an executive section, excuse me, I put executive session tonight. So I guess Nanette would want to know, Jane, we have an executive session, everyone leaves, but you could just wait out there, it shouldn't be too, too long, and then I can spend as much time as the boys need, okay?